Good evening and welcome to the December eight, uh, December 16th regularly scheduled Board of Education meeting. At this point in time, if you would turn off your cell phones and then stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First order of business, Secretary Baker, could you please take attendance?
Sure, President Singer.
Here.
Vice President McFarland.
Here.
Secretary Baker here, Treasurer Fedell.
Here.
Member Blasey.
Here.
Member Lotterbach. Captain and Member Roush.
Here.
There's six present.
Great. Okay, we will move into item two, which is our consent agenda. Are there any items that anyone would like removed from the consent agenda and discussed individually?
I know that we can do discussion now on one of the items, but I think I'd, out of courtesy for everybody that's here in these little ones, how about we move 2.4 to later in the meeting?
Okay, so we will move item 2.4, which is approval of the payment of the school systems bills to, why don't we move it down to 3.7?
Okay.
Okay. All right. And if I could have a motion then to approve the consent agenda, items 2.1, 2.2, 2.3, and 2.5.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Fedell, support by Roush, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and it passes unanimously. We'll move into item three, which is Board of Education Matters Presentations to the Board. Tonight we have shining stars, Mr. Sherrill.
Our first shining star is Cassandra Stauffer-Hudson, if Cassandra would come up. For awkward moment, you get to stand here, Cassandra, will I talk about you, okay? Cassie joined the MPS team in 2015 as a paraprofessional at Plymouth Elementary School. This is Cassie's second MPS shining star. She received her first shining star in March of 2018. Cassie was nominated for the shining star by an MPS parents. Among their comments were the following. Ms. Cassie is loved and adored by Plymouth students. She worked tirelessly in her position with the school as well as the PTO president to bring a sense of community to the school by including all. She leads with fairness and is a great example to students and staff alike. Cassie exhibits both a love for learning and for all the students at Plymouth. She treats all the students with kindness and respect and goes out of her way to help teach the students to be the kind and kid. Not only is she one of the building's paraprofessionals, she's also the PTO president and has worked incredibly hard alongside her team to incorporate many fun ways to celebrate being a pioneer. I'm very grateful that my children are fortunate enough to have a wonderful influence like Cassie in their lives. Congratulations, Cassie. Shake everybody's hands?
I can do that, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
And our second shining star is Eric Adder, if Eric would come up and join me. Same thing, Eric, I'm gonna talk about you a little bit. Eric graduated from Central Michigan University with a bachelor's of music education degree in 2010 and earned his master's in music conducting from CMU in 2017. Eric joined the MPS team in 2016 as a district music teacher assigned at Northeast Middle School. Before joining MPS, Eric spent five years as the director of bands at the Bertrand Area Schools. Mr. Adder was nominated for a shining star by a parent and MPS colleague. Among her comments were the following. Last night, I went to my daughter's eighth grade music à la mode concert and was blown away at how far they have come. They marched and played as well as did fancy things with their instruments when they weren't playing. As a former MPS band student, I can promise you that doing all of these skills together is hard. I was shocked at the high quality of the music they produced and the composure the kids showed. As a former teacher and current administrator, it's very clear to me that a teacher can only produce something that impressive by building a climate of respect and care. Eric is funny with the kids, and he is, and has great relationships with them. My daughter has had Mr. Adder since she was in fifth grade. She has always spoken highly of him and knows him well. She respects him as a teacher and a person. He make, he makes jokes with the students while at the same time demands dedication and competence. My daughter has mentioned time and time again that the only reason she stays in band is because Mr. Adder. Since teachers don't always hear positives, and as the superintendent you don't either, I wanted to make sure to take the time to let you know that we have amazing things going on in our district because of amazing people we have on staff. Congratulations, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you, and now we have a few presentations to the board.
Correct, our first presentation is about our first Lego team, I think Mr. Poole, are you kicking it off for us?
Good evening, I don't need the stool yet, but I know others that will. Thank you for inviting us tonight, and we obviously have heard a lot about the robotics teams that we have in the high school, but we would not have our robotics teams if it wasn't for the first tech and also for the first Junior Lego League. So make sure that we ask them all kinds of questions, because I'm sure there's a lot of them that are here and are ready for you to answer them. But Sudhi Amerman is starting us off, thank you.
Hi, my name is Sudhi Amerman, and I'm a volunteer coordinator for the lower level FIRST programs at Midland Public Schools. Before we get started, I want to take a moment to thank some folks. We would like to thank Midland Public Schools for embracing this program. As you're gonna see in a few minutes, it's life-changing for the students. And a special thanks to our elementary teaching staff who are serving as volunteer coordinators, we couldn't do it without them. Sarah Cooper, Molly Callahar, Melissa Grunder, and Ashley Kling. And a special thanks to Mrs. Griffin Adams, who has served as a mentor assistant on many of our Adams teams for over five years. And thank you to Mr. Sean Murray, Dow High Math and Programming Teacher, who has provided valuable guidance, advice, and support as the program grows at Midland Public Schools. And finally, and last but not least, a special thanks to our sponsors. Dow, Nexteer Automotive, DuPont GM, Michigan Department of Education, and the many local organizations that helped make this program a success by providing not only funding but industry expert mentors. Today, we will be presenting our upper elementary program, which is grades four and five, called FIRST Lego League, and our middle school program, FIRST Tech Challenge. Both that have been intensely busy with their competition seasons and their state qualifiers just this past weekend for both programs. Our first topic we're gonna talk about is FIRST Lego League, and our first topic is gracious professionalism and core values, which is the core of the, and the ethos of the FIRST program. And we have some friends here to talk about what gracious professionalism is.
Hi, my name is Henry Kozik, and I am part of the Central Park Beyond the Brick Team. Gracious professionalism is important because it helps encourage others to do their best without focusing on winning or losing. Midland Schools teams show this by cheering for each other during competition and being willing to help each other with problems.
Hello, my name is Katie Kai, and I am a member of the Adams City Warriors FLL team. Gracious professionalism is a very important part of FLL. Gracious professionalism is healthy competition as well as respecting your teammates and opponents.
And up next, we're gonna have a group of kids who are gonna be talking about the Innovation Project. The Innovation Project is a component that is unique to FIRST Lego League only, so the grade four and five program. They're gonna talk about what the seasonal challenge is, and they're gonna talk about some of their projects, just to give you a high-level overview of them.
Hi, my name is Cameron Cochran, and I'm from the Adams City Warriors FLL team. I'm here to talk about the project, which is City Shaper this year. And City Shaper, in City Shaper, you have to identify a problem with the city and then find a solution for that problem.
Our project steps, so our first project step was to decide on a topic. Our next step was to research about the topic, and then we contacted experts about our topic. And our last step was to do our experiments and make your poster.
My name is Brady from the Cyclone Wolverines. As a team, we decided on repurposing the Midland Mall because it is becoming a national for the community.
Hi, my name is Spencer from Central Park, and we chose the Collin Street parking lot as our innovation project because it's been hard to get out, so we chose to make it angle parking and one-way traffic, so all can leave the school swiftly and safely.
And the Central Park team is planning to come back to visit you guys with more details, just so you know. Finally, we're gonna talk about the piece that actually grows our kids, and that's the robot. We have a few kids that are gonna just talk real quick about their robots.
Hello, my name is Carter from Central Park Elementary.
What's your favorite part of your robots?
My favorite part of a robot is the arms, because they help us move, it's mostly removing the blocks and dropping the crane.
Hello, my name is Kealan Coe, and I'm part of the Adams City Warriors team, and my favorite part of the robot is the gyro and color sensor.
My name is Emma Yu from Adams City Warriors, and my favorite part of the robot is the crane fixture.
Hello, my name is Sam from the Plymouth Pioneer Programmers, and my favorite part about the robot is the arms.
One second, buddy. Up on the screen, uh, flip the screen for me, thanks. Up on the screen, you'll see nine FIRST Lego League teams from the City Shaper season. Congratulations to all of the teams, it was a big year for them. I want to especially congratulate Plymouth and Central Park because it was their inaugural year, and in this program, it's really hard. Their second year will be a lot better, but they really, really deserve a pat on the back. And we had four teams that qualified for the state championship, and we brought home a lot of hardware. So I finally have Lucas here who's gonna wrap up for us.
Hi, my name is Lucas, and I'm a Plymouth programmer. Me and my team have learned a lot this year. I have learned how to program, and I also learned how teamwork is so important. I can't wait to do robotics next year.
And if you have any questions for them, we're all done, then we're gonna move into middle school.
Excellent, thank you for that presentation, I'm sure we have questions, I'll open it up to the board.
How many of you are in fourth grade? Whoa, fifth grade. Wow, that's impressive.
What I think is just as impressive is that you all incorporate gracious professionalism into everything you do with robotics. That is a trait that's gonna carry you very far in life. Always remember what you learn here, it's really, it's an important deal, and it may not seem that way now, but you'll realize it down the road. The question I have for you is, when you guys are building your robots, and we're having a hard time seeing them with your boards in the way, maybe somebody can lift them up. Are you guys, is the team responsible for building different parts of the robot? Like, for example, somebody's responsible for building the arms or putting the motor together, or how does that work? Sure.
I mean, it depends on how the team works, but usually you have a group of people, and usually you'll have some, some people finding and some people putting together, and then passing to another person who will play on the robot. That's generally how my team works.
Okay.
It might be different for other teams.
Anybody else want to comment, go ahead.
What I was gonna say is that your whole team builds a robot. So our team did half of our team at the time did the innovation project, and half of the team built the robot at the same time, but the next week they switched, and then we all, we had partners for on a mission on the board to do it. And so that's how our team worked.
Very nice.
Excellent, that's nice.
Thank you, guys, you guys can go ahead and go around that way.
Before, before they leave, would they be able to take the robots and bring them up and show them to us?
Sure, as long as you don't mind, I know we only had 15 minutes, and we have middle school, so if you guys go by.
Okay, that's fine, they could roll by and then go back to their seats, that way we can see it up close.
Yeah, just walk past and hold, so we can get a quick look.
Thank you.
Those are neat, those are all Legos, huh?
That looks great.
Very cool. Wow, that's a huge robot.
Yeah.
Wow.
Nice.
Nice.
Yeah. Thank you.
So I'm now gonna turn over the program to the middle school program, which is called FIRST Tech Challenge. We had amazing year this year, I don't wanna steal their thunder, but all five of our teams qualified for states, so that was a big deal. And they're gonna explain to the middle school program, and they're gonna have a demo set up.
My name is Daniel Segura, I'm the lead business mentor for the Jefferson PsyDogs, the FIRST Tech Challenge. I'm going to introduce Jayah Coe from our team, but I also wanted to recognize that we have representatives from the Viking Vendors, and also, I saw another team here as well. Viking Force as well. Another team that we don't have represented is the Jefferson Techno Huskies and the Wired Wolves. And the Techno Huskies, we're very proud to say that they made the Worlds on Saturday. They've actually won the whole entire event by, by winning the Inspire Award. And it's a great honor, and they should be recognized for sure for that. Jayah.
So we are the Jefferson PsyDogs, and over the season, we've all learned a lot together. And, for example, we did a lot of outreach educating our community and beyond that about our robot and programming. For example, we had a call with, a video call with, it's like a refugee camp in Malawi. We talked to them about programming, and because they're learning in Java, so we also got to learn how they programmed, and we shared them our robot, and it was pretty cool.
So when we made our robot, we decided on using the FTC blocks programming to make our program so the robot can run. During the match, it consists of a 30-second autonomous and a two-minute driver-controlled telly-up time. So we, during the autonomous, we had to correctly identify a skystone with a black label on it other than a normal stone, which looks like really big Legos. So we used something called TensorFlow that was made, and it can detect different things from each other, so we use that to detect different recognitions to see if, if we can see anything from something from something else.
FTC is, um, not anything like FLL. I mean, it's robotics, of course, but instead of building with Legos, we make robots with metal and machine our own parts and 3D print, and, um, you can use Java, Java for coding, but we chose to use blocks. It's the more in-depth version, and our robots are about 18 inches, and, um, we also do a project, but the main part is the robot.
Um, so last, so last year, our logo got flagged for copyright, so, yeah, because it used, because the husky that was used in it apparently wasn't original, according to like, and someone decided to actually bring a lawyer in. So we decided to, so we decided to just make our own logo. So one of our teammates named Denise actually sketched this out, and then Audra back there somewhere, um, she helped make it into a digital design. So this shows that we will always rise to problems, even if they involve lawyers and authorities. So the PsyDogs, we'd like to talk about our sponsors. Some of our sponsors were Dow, Exalt Battery, State Farm, um, Dow Corning, um, I don't, um, sorry, uh, Olin. And we'd like to thank our sponsors, because the, we have many mentors who are from those companies and helped us with their industry expertise on STEM-related subjects, like science, technology, engineering, which greatly benefited our team.
Nice.
We're gonna have the Northeast teams do a demo real quick.
So the telly-up portion of the robotics competition?
Oh.
With mainly adding these cubes and then placing them on a platform that would be around the, like a little corner of the plank. And, uh, something that I'm a little tired about putting on here is, in the motors that turns up this linear slide right here, there is an, we use the encoder ticks in the motors to be able to properly place the stones on there, but since there is not any encoder, like the platform, it can't use the encoder ticks to be able to place them. And it's basically these giant little cubes that we place onto each other. Bring it down, bring it down, bitch. Um, and yeah, it's, what they're mentioning in the autonomous portion, which is basically all programming, and the drivers physically have no options of being able to control the robot. It is all the robot seeing the blocks and being able to pick them up. And this black stone that I'm picking up right now, you can kinda see on the edge that there's the little black portion of it. It is getting those and being able to use a camera with a type of technology called Euphoria, would be able to pick up those blocks and be able to sense it, and then go out and collect it for, like, more points than just grabbing the traditional yellow cube blocks.
So who's doing what with the controls, you each have one?
So we, in our, you can go ahead and just take it. In our programming, we set up a thing to where one controller, which would be my controller, would be controlling what I'm doing right now, the robot moving. And then we also have this arm that'd be able to collect cubes by themselves, and this arm that would be able to pull cubes up themselves.
And then my controller is the one that actually, like, flicks in a block and then allows us to be able to stack, go out and place blocks.
Oh, wow, wow. Let's get them high.
So as you can tell, like, we can get to many different angles with how our programmers were able to program our controls, so we're able to basically tackle any problem that may happen during the game.
How, how often are you guys meeting to work on this?
Um, our group, I think it was a total of 2,200 hours in total, if you were to count everyone's hours that they put into this. We meet on the, in the very beginning of the competition, our team specifically met about eight hours each day over the weekend, and to be able to get this thing operational and to get a rough idea of what to do. What our group did mainly is just think about prototypes, what we wanted to do. And, uh, something I think that helped our robot to be able to collect these very easily is one of my friends named Eli Cleaver, he thought of this idea for the green wheels right there. He was just making fun of having a softball launcher to be able to shoot them at other robots, and then it just came out with this idea and actually helped our robot to be able to beat most teams. Uh-oh, raise it up a little.
How long do you have to build your robot?
Um, isn't it about like six weeks?
It took about like six-ish weeks, yeah.
This program goes to two competitions, so they have about six weeks for their first competition, and then they go to another one, so they can continue building, but.
Go up and do capstone. And there's this special thing called a capstone, which, we have this R2 on it, but it, we kinda can't, we lost the R2 for some reason. You can go down a bit. And then right there, what would happen, this would be around the end game portion, which is 30 seconds left in the match, and if you can kinda see that noise, it has these two little claws that are at the very end, and it hooks onto the foundation, so I can move it back and then get it out of the way so our robot can get into the corner. And it, basically, what's the problem with it is, if you notice, I'm about to knock this over. It's pretty easy to knock over, so moving the foundation has a risk for being able to knock the foundation over and to lose a ton of points.
Oh, okay.
You can raise it up.
So can you tell us, have you ever been building this robot? Had a time where you really struggled with something that wasn't going right, and then what you did to solve the problem?
You can talk about it.
So one thing that we struggled with during the season was actually like our vertical lift, because we, like, at one point, we had two of them, but we had a lot of electronics to put on our robot, so we had to just take it down just like to the one that we have right now. But that one was very uncertain, so we had to put two bearings, which is pretty unusual for robots now. So, like, so we could have enough strength to be able to go up as far as we can.
Like, usually on the traditional linear slide, which, I mean, which is used through like a drawers, drawer slide that you use at your house. And for us, we only have like one of these, but because since it was not as strong as a, which is one, we had to put two of those, it would be just as strong, and we also put this like metal like angled iron thing and just put it on there to give it more support.
Giving away all your secrets. So is it right that when you're in competition, that if another team is struggling and, and they can come to you and ask for help? Or how do you, how does that work with robotics?
Like, last year, there was, our robot wasn't able to go to the states in the very first competition. So we went to this competition like way, wasn't it?
It was in Iron Mountain.
Yeah, Iron Mountain, and all the teams out there, they didn't, some of them didn't even have a regular program to be able to drive their robot. And our programming coach was up there, so since all the judges that were up there didn't really understand programming too much, they just strapped on a judging thing onto him and had him walking around helping to program other teams to be able to get actual functioning robot.
Oh, thanks. Amazing, that's what I have to say, it's amazing.
How many people total are on your team?
Okay, so on our team and the other Northeast team, there's a total of 24 people, each team with 12 members.
Okay, how about over at Jefferson? How many teams and how many students are involved then?
Uh, we have three Jefferson teams, and there is about 12 on each, yeah.
Thank you.
The teams are capped at 15, and we try to keep them at 12.
Yeah.
At this level, the fourth and fifth graders, they're capped at 10.
Thank you.
Are there tryouts, I guess for lack of a better word, or do you just kinda sign up and you're on, you're playing? up and you're on you're placed on a team? How does that work?
It's just kind of like a signup thing.
Okay.
If you want to do it, you just come and just have fun, I guess.
Also on the form, uh they literally say, what team do you want to be with or who do you want to be with on your team?
Any recommendations?
Now that you have a logo, huh?
So one of the way one of the ways that we and I know we're going over time, if we need to cut, that's fine. Um one of the ways that we try to manage the numbers is we make sure that it's we're very upfront with the expectations of the time commitment. This is considered a sport. Um it's not a club, it's required, you know, so if somebody is in multiple sports, sometimes they weed themselves out. Um so we have very detailed parent information meetings in the spring. Um and that's how we keep a lot of just making sure we're getting the kids that truly, truly can commit um to the program. Um and then making sure we have mentors is the other piece.
Oh, very good.
And I think that's important part. There's all these volunteers, parents out here, and some aren't parents, by the way, they're just volunteers, so.
Are there mentors out in the audience? Raise your hand?
Wow.
Nice. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. That was awesome. Now the magic of the disappearing act.
Hey man, Roger's gonna keep the last one standing.
Right.
Yeah, Mike, you better hold on tight.
No problem. Thank you.
Did Mary know?
Thank you all. Thanks.
Great job, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job.
Nice job. Thank you.
Very cool. Psy dogs, I was wondering how to spell that when you said that it was a psy dog. Does it feel cold in here? Yes. Are we saving energy? It's a little chilly in here.
That I wouldn't know. That's refreshing stuff.
That is refreshing.
Okay, I think we're ready to get started again. Uh we'll move into item three point three, which is for action. We have approval of Midland Public Schools' emergency operation plans. And Mr. Jaster?
Yep, thank you. Pursuant to public Act four thirty-six of two thousand and eighteen, it requires that by January first, two thousand and twenty, school districts, intermediate school districts or public school academies must develop emergency operation plans or review an existing plan. This act further requires that these plans be adopted or reviewed in conjunction with at least one law enforcement agency that has jurisdiction over the district, intermediate school district or public school academy, and include a review of vulnerability assessment. No later than thirty days after adopting or reviewing the EOP, the board or board of directors shall provide notice of completed plans to the Michigan Department of Education. To do this, a district, intermediate school district or public school academy must certify in MEGS Plus that its approved EOP contains all, or at least the components specified in the legislation. I have binders full of printed plans and I think you were provided an electronic copy of the district plan to review.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, at this time, I'll entertain a motion for item three point three.
I'll move for approval of the MPS Emergency Operation Plan pursuant to Public Act four thirty-six of two thousand and eighteen.
Support.
Moved by McFarlane, support by Roush, and we'll move into discussion. I I think it's great how uh all the entities are coming together, real collaborative effort and uh very professional and I appreciate that and the forethought to make this happen. There is no other comments, we'll move into vote. Uh all in favor of approving item three point three, approval of MPS Emergency Operation Plans, see say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and it passes unanimously. Moving to item three point four, again, as for action, we have bond construction bids. Uh Mr. Sherrill, are you going?
Mr. Brin's gonna take the lead.
Yep, sure. So before tonight, you have uh three packages. Um we're also gonna bring another series to you at the next board meeting. Tonight, we have package twenty-two oh one, which are the tennis courts at HH Dow and Midland High School and also the turf at the community stadium. Bid pack twenty-two oh two, which are the aluminum entrances, doors and windows at HH Dow. And then bid pack twenty-two oh five, which is the demolition of East Lawn and Franklin. Uh we reviewed these bid series with our construction manager at our last FFO and are bringing forward to you tonight a recommendation for the awards as listed in your packet.
Very good, thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve bid packages twenty-two oh one, twenty-two oh two, and twenty-two oh five, as listed in item three point four.
I I didn't see the correlation of the numbers you were giving.
Oh.
I'll support.
Moved by Roush, support by McFarlane, and we'll move into discussion.
On page sixty-six of our packet, which lists the alternates, I wondered if you could talk about those and the awarded and the unawarded and where we stand with those three items. Um the MHS galvanized fence was not awarded. Um the post-tensioned concrete was awarded as an alternate, I'm just curious what that is. And then the DHS install turf was unawarded. So I was curious about those three items.
Sure.
Um so in reverse order, um the DHS install turf is we um took a bid on the turf over at Dow High. Um and those fundraising efforts at the time, we thought that it might be advantageous to do so. And uh it's my understanding at this time that they're not ready to move forward, so we did not award that. Um the galvanized fencing, um that was a part, I believe, Mr. Sherrill, of the Midland High Tennis Court Project as well, too. And um the award of that galvanized fencing, we're actually moving the Midland High Courts from their current location, which is kind of sandwiched in between the school and the stadium. And they're being moved over to where the Parkdale Facility is currently, right off of that parking lot. So the galvanized fencing was a part of that project. Um and then the other one that you said was, I'm sorry if you could refresh me?
The post-tensioned concrete.
Sure, post-tensioned concrete. And Mr. Sherrill will do a better job at this, but I'll take a stab at it for you. Um rather than doing the courts in asphalt, um post-tensioned concrete is an alternative that I believe has more enhanced rebar type-like material to it where they can kind of cinch it together. And listening to our architects, they say that this will likely double the life of the courts and also will survive that freeze thaw cycle that plagues many of the tennis courts in Michigan. And so we thought that the value add from that um was a wise choice and will help us get a much longer life out of the court than the alternative.
On the all the athletic stuff, they use a consultant on that. And so when we reviewed our tennis courts, um originally when we did the walkthrough five years ago, Dow High just had a resurfacing in it, but it is beyond resurfacing already. And so and Brad, you may or may not know in your field that asphalt has become a little bit of an issue with the amount of metal in it and the staining that they have on it as well. And so we bid it both to see if we could afford it. We're under budget completely on all of these. We lucked very well, getting out to the market goods. We were able to fold forward the concrete, which FFO heard, um and probably extends the life almost by double, so. And the fencing, um a little more clear on that, the fencing would have been if we had stayed in the present spot at at Midland High when it was moved, it's part of the whole project.
So we're still gonna have fencing at the new Midland?
Yes, that's why I want to clarify that.
So it's gonna go all the way at the end, the other end of the parking lot?
Yeah, because of that jammed area, we weren't able to design with our preferred design, which is similar to Dow High. And you're I'm gonna be a little bit on my area that had something about viewing area and the space in between. And it's too tight in there, we would have really had some problems in that space. And probably it's not the best spot anyway where it's been placed, so.
Okay. So with galvanized fencing, um is that an item in the future that we are going to be seeing? Because we're in dire need of updating fencing throughout.
So our belief is if we stay under budget like we are, one of the items that we'd like to go out and we've done and we've talked about and I've actually done it before is have a whole fencing plan. Can we eliminate some that's not needed? As you know, there's spots, there's probably fencing in the district that causes um litter collection, um we don't trim as well around it. So less fencing is a good thing, but certainly safety is an issue. And then replacing fencing, because you are correct. Just walk behind this building and see our bus garage. It's one of the first ones I think we have to do as well. We literally almost can't get our buses in through the gates and stuff. So yeah, I think it's to be reviewed if we stay under budget and we're ready to go out for other bu- big packages, that would be one that's reviewed on there at that time.
Okay, so the Dow High installing the turf was just?
So if their fundraising efforts were to come to fruition, we brought them in, we showed them um the design at the stadium and we thought we could get a better buy if they were actually able to get the funds. They don't have do not have the funds listed at this time. Um there was some mark savings in there, but it wasn't significant, so. And remember, those those funds are outside ours, so we were just trying to benefit them. Why not bid two pieces? And it was just the turf. It wasn't the install or anything like that, it was just a purchase of the turf.
Okay. Um also, in the packet, we have the whole big summary and with series one, two, and three, and then the totals, um I see that we have, obviously, we're moving money around, we're doing different things, but there's been a big change at the high schools. That originally, they both started out right around the twelve million mark. And if you total all three phases up now, um four million has been removed from Midland High and one million has been added to Dow High. So now Dow Dow High is a thirteen million dollar spend, Midland High is an eight million dollar spend. And why do we have the five million dollar change in funds between the two schools in in this?
You're asking me a question that I certainly would have to go back and do the legwork on, so I don't know if I can answer you. I do know that if you recall at Dow High, and I'm gonna assume that this is probably tied to it, we originally had ten air units and we're doing twenty-four or something in there. I'm gonna guess that had to do with the transfer of those funds, because we chose to do them all instead of part of them. But um I'd have I'd have to go back and take all the legwork on that and I'm sure Brian would have to do the same.
The exact same, yep. We'll talk with our manager and get an answer.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions or comments? All right, I know I'm looking forward to seeing the new tennis courts at uh Midland High and we walked through Dow High today and commented on all the glass up front and uh the the cost of replacing those, but it sure will be a wonderful update for our district.
And energy efficiency that's so needed in that building, so.
Absolutely. All right, so we'll move into a vote of approving item three point four. Uh I did get a motion for this, right? I got a motion a second, okay, so uh so approving item three point four, the bond construction bids, twenty-two oh one, twenty-two oh two, twenty-two oh five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and it passes unanimously. We'll move into item three point five, which is for action, the Halo Smart Sensor Bid. Mr. Bruton?
Um earlier in the year, I know Mr. Sherrill's been keeping you up to date on our implementation of Halo Smart Sensors, otherwise known to the kids as the vape sensors. Um we have had great feedback from our high school administrators on the implementation of these devices. And so we have decided to expand these devices into further locations in the high schools and also into our middle schools as well. So we solicited bids for forty Halo Smart Sensors and we're asking tonight that we issue a purchase order to the low bidder, ACP Creativity out of Illinois, for thirty-five thousand, two hundred dollars, which came out to eight hundred and eighty dollars per device. And these are being paid for out of a grant from the Midland Community Foundation out of the Art Frog Fund.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
At this point, I'll entertain a motion.
I move that we um go forward with a Halo Smart Sensor Bid.
Support.
Moved by Friddell, support by Roush, and move into discussion.
Mike, I really appreciate your comments on NPR and other news outlets lately that, you know, we're not doing this without telling the kids, but we're really educating them at the same time and I think that's the most important thing, so thank you.
Can you describe just a little bit of what happens when they go off?
Yeah.
Mr. Jaster's probably.
Yeah, actually Jeff has kind of done it, I'm also let him answer.
The uh thank you. The high school administrators are all connected um to an account for the building, so each each high school right now has these Halo Sensors in the bathrooms. We're still gonna finish the install and put them in locker room spaces as well.
They look almost like a fire alarm, Brad.
Yeah, yep, it's just a small unit in the ceiling. When they're triggered, uh these devices can detect the chemical makeup of the vapor, whether it's actual cigarette smoke, marijuana smoke, vape liquid that's been obviously vaporized. And I think as you've heard Mike talk about, they also have decibel meters, so loud noises, whether it's shouting or, you know, heaven forbid, you know, gunfire, something like that would trigger this alarm. So all the administrators connected in that building are instantaneously alerted through email or it can be, um I think also set up as a text message and I'm not sure what their preferences are now, but I think most are receiving uh the notices through email. And then obviously, they're not in the restrooms uh with the students, uh so then there's a little CSI work that has to happen, so they're checking hallway cameras to see who who just went in the bathroom, who came out of the bathroom, and that's how they're doing the follow-up. Um and so far, though, it it has greatly decreased the number of incidents that they've recorded at each school. And I think it's because, as Mike just mentioned, the kids all know that they're there. So that's part of the reason it's it's working so well, I think.
So they are addressable, so you can pinpoint.
Yeah.
Yep.
And then the camera helps. I mean, if we're there near enough, you obviously can walk in.
Yep.
But then they can check the cameras as well. Preventive, you know, kind of I liken it to back in the days when we start putting cameras on buses, kids knew they were there and they stopped doing some of the things they were doing. Um and as Phil said, the next side is continuing to educate why vaping is harmful, just like we did tobacco, we've kind of pushed tobacco. And if nothing else, we at least are pushing it out of the school building, you know. And we we knew we were having a hard time detecting these. I mean, we would hear from staff, literally, that there could be kids in the back of the room hitting these vapes in their book bags because they were small. If you've seen the devices, I mean, they some look like a stick drive in your computer and so. I saw them, we kind of talked about them for a while, we weren't really sure was that good a technology. We piloted a couple and we were thrilled, so was staff.
Very good. If there's no other questions, we'll move into a vote. So all in favor of approving the Halo Smart Sensor Bid, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and it passes unanimously. Item three point six is for action, it's classroom furniture purchase. Mr. Bruton?
Sure. Um one of the things that Mr. Cooper tried to do um each and every single year was to have a school um built into the budget to purchase a classroom set of furniture. And um this year, we have talked with our principals and we're trying to speed up that cycle just a little bit and inject just a little bit more capital into those projects. And so we've decided to solicit um from the principals what their highest need classrooms were for a set of furniture. So we worked with the same company, Duel, that has been doing some of the design, they're the ones that did the furniture over at Central Park as well, too, to design modern classrooms. Um you saw from the spec layouts that we gave you that it really isn't your traditional type of layout. And we had them design classrooms, as you saw, at the kindergarten, fourth grade, and secondary levels as well. So we're bringing before you tonight the purchase of ten sets of classroom furniture, that's one for every building minus Central Park, plus the pre-primary center, because Central Park just got new furniture. So it would be every single building minus Central Park with a new set of furniture. And again, the principals work with the teachers to pick their highest need classroom set. And so the spec layouts were for you and we ask that you award this tonight to uh Duel Corporation of Holland, Michigan, utilizing the same national purchasing contracts that we've done all throughout the bond.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
I'll entertain a motion.
Move that we support item three point six for the classroom furniture purchases.
Support. Moved by Roush, support by Friddell, and we'll move into discussion.
What is the long-term plan? That we have one for each one of these classrooms, which they're gonna be the envy of the school to have this wonderful furniture. I know it's.
So so they presently often uh requested build our budget time to do one themselves and we're not gonna get there doing one. And so right now, we've felt financially we could add one more. I think as we go, the plan, long-term plan is probably from there to dive into the secondaries more more, um so being larger, more classrooms, you know, if we can continue to trend financially where we are, build two or three at each building and then maybe a few less at the elementary and begin that transition. I liken it to our bus fleets or technology fleets, you never purchase it all at one time. they're going to be the envy of the school to have this wonderful furniture. I know it's...
So they presently often requested build our budget time to do one themselves. And we're not going to get there doing one. And so right now, we've felt financially we could add one more. I think as we go, the plan, long-term plan is probably from there to dive into the secondaries more. So being larger, more classrooms, you know, if we can continue to trend financially where we are, build two or three at each building, and then maybe a few less at the elementary and begin that transition. I liken it to our bus fleets or technology fleets. You never purchase it all at one time, because it also ages out at times, and then it's a large ticket item. The bond, if it holds, I think some people thought when they saw furniture meant all that, but furniture was for a lot of your new spaces, as you've saw, and approved. But if it holds, and to the end, we will revisit, and there is a line item for some more classroom furniture as well on there as well. Between that and the general fund, hopefully, we can replace it. Obviously, the furniture and then the classroom is not usable, but there is some that are definitely seeing their better days. But when you consolidate the schools, it did catch you up a little bit as well.
And it's nice that it's addressing the needs of teaching now versus when
Yes.
a lot of those were bought, which was probably 1960, at least, in the high schools, if that. And you just don't line the kids all up in a row anymore. They do allow more collaboration and sharing and teamwork. So it's really versatile and able to be moved around. It's nice. Nice. Okay. At this time, we will move into a vote then. So all in favor of approving issuing a purchase order for $190,829 to Duel Corporation of Holland, Michigan, for 10 sets of classroom furniture, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and it passes unanimously. We'll move into item 3.7, which was removed from the consent agenda. It's approval of the payment of the school system bills for the month of October 2019. I'll need a motion to move.
Move that we support now item 3.7, approval of the school systems bills for the month of October 2019.
Support.
Moved by Roush, support by Friddell, and we'll open up for discussion.
Made a request last meeting to talk about hyperlinks, and we've had some dialogue going back and forth. And I wanted to talk about a couple of those items. One of those in our new packet, which was offered to have all credit card transactions and the full check register. I don't think we, as a board, are interested in all of that detail. I know that's something that was offered, but that is not something that we need to look at. And it's my opinion, I also talked to Phil about it a little bit, that, you know, $4 purchases, $3.50 purchases, that's not our role. My original request, and I hope we can move towards that, is having hyperlinks or documentation of our original purchase order listing, which is all purchases $3,000 or more, or credit card purchases of $3,000 or more, to have the purchase order and/or the invoice that backs up with that. If that's too much of a task to begin with, as Phil and I discussed, we'd be willing to raise that ceiling to a higher dollar amount, just to get it started, get started with the bigger ticket items, develop a strategy to do that, whether it is updating our board book, whether it is simply using the same board book we have and including it in the packet. I would like the administration to entertain that. And we would like to have more documentation of those bigger purchases. It is my opinion that a mistake was made previously, and I want to avoid that in the future. And I would really like to look at, hyperlinks would be the easiest for us to be able to look at this information, so it's not listed out in the full packet. But that's up to the administration to evaluate. The new board book that is available to us, right now, we're using the classic. They have a fully updated version, which is a full encompassing program, that we could just simply link onto that at all of our stations and go through each line item as we're going through it electronically, which might speed us up. They say it's easier to put the board packet together. I would like the administration to take a look at that. But having backup for those bigger ticket items would be a great place to start. And I don't want, it's not our best interest, or not anything that we need to see of the roughly 20 pages of the transactions. That's more stuff. That's not what I was asking for. And I don't think anybody up here has any interest in going through all those line items.
Okay. It sounds like you might have a motion that you want to make. But before we would do that, we need to vote on this. Is that, is that what you want to do?
I can make a motion, or we can, it doesn't matter if it is a motion, or an ask of the administration to actively pursue the hyperlinks and the updating of our board book. If you would like that as a motion, I'd be more than happy to make it as a motion.
I wouldn't, I personally, I wouldn't want that. But if that's, if you feel compelled to make a motion, and you can find support among the board to do that, then we'll move forward. If there's not support, then we don't move forward.
Okay.
But before we do that, we got to vote on this.
Yep.
Okay. So item 3.7 is payment of the school system bills. And so we will move into a vote. All those in favor of approving the payment of the school system bills, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and it passes unanimously. Do you have a motion you want to make?
Yeah, I make a motion that we look into upgrading our board book program, and that we hyperlink our purchase order transactions and our credit card transactions. If we followed up, if we did exactly what we've always had in the past, in our November packet, there was 20 purchase orders, and...
Point of clarification, Brad.
Yep.
You've kind of said it a couple of different ways. So I think we walked away confused the last time as well.
Got it.
And so business office has been a little lost on this, hyperlinking to the purchase orders and credit cards. So that is what you get. And we can put it under a hyperlink. That's easy. The detailed backup is the issue. So you're asking for purchase orders, credit cards, and it's all its detail. That's the part that needs to be clear.
Of the big ticket items, then I'm willing to entertain what that dollar figure is.
Just making sure the motion's said right, till we know.
Our existing packet right now, we see everything and approve in our consent agenda everything above $3,000.
Okay. If you're making a motion, then the motion will be there. If it's seconded, then it'll be seconded, and then we would go into discussion in that. So motion has been...
So my motion, and I, Phil and I discussed this, that we're going to start at anything above $25,000.
So a motion to upgrade board book program and hyperlink PO and credit card transactions. If we do what we have done, okay, so above 20%...
I got, offer a point of clarification. State threshold, because it moves with the, it's about 25,000. It'd be clearer if you said state threshold. It moves each...
State threshold, $24,900.
Yeah, whatever it is.
Whatever it is.
Okay. So I have a motion to upgrade board book program and hyperlink PO and credit card transactions greater than the state threshold, $24,900.
State threshold or greater, or else you wouldn't be in the right spot.
Right. Okay. All right. The motion's been made.
Support. But I guess, not sure exactly how to do this. Brad, I would like to just refer this, make the motion such that we refer it to FFO.
Okay.
So that they can study it.
Mm-hmm.
Because, you know, I, so do we need to, because I wanted to follow up on a couple of things Brad said.
So the motion was made by Brad. It was supported by Phil, so now we're in discussion.
But now I've amended the motion. So do I need to fix it?
Yeah. So we need a mend of the motion, of the motion?
You can't.
Yeah.
Can't do it in the...
So we just need to take a vote on the first motion?
We have to have a second to the first motion.
So do you have a clear second? It was kind of...
So if you support that...
It almost sounded like after you commented...
Or you can make a different motion after we get past with this one.
So I would not support, I don't support the original motion. So is there a second to the original motion?
Okay. So there's been a motion. If there's no second, then this one dies. And now we move into...
Yeah. So I'll make a motion that we refer to FFO the cost-benefit analysis of reviewing PO transactions above the state threshold for superintendent's delegation of authority.
Now, when you're saying cost-benefit analysis, are you talking about some evidence-based way of doing things? Or we're just, you're just asking FFO to look at this?
Both.
And then bring forth a recommendation?
Yes.
Both?
Yes.
That motion works. But I just want to make sure to be clear. I think what you really are asking is for us, we already give you that, POs and credit card. You're asking for that to be in a file with all of its detail behind it. That's what needs to be studied, because, well, after last meeting, we understood it to be all POs and transactions. We brought it to FFO, and we showed the work, which was significant. You can debate the hours, but it was five feet tall of documents that come in variety sizes. So each one of those has to be, because there is, we do not have, and the new board book doesn't do that, does hyperlinks, but not the backup. So we get a restaurant receipt, we get a packing slip.
Yep.
We get, all that has to be scanned, organized, zip filed to a PO, to a zip file for you to see that. So that's what should needs to be studied. I mean, I think your motion works. I just want you to, we all nod or agree that that's what's going to be studied, because it's significant. It's still a significant amount of time, which the business office presently doesn't have. And so...
Right. What I'd like, ultimately, what I'd like the FFO committee to do is just do an analysis of, are they, are they satisfied with the amount of information that we get in the PO transaction list? And if not, what is the changes that they would make? Right? Because they're going to have a lot more availability to go into the discussion and analysis than we are at a board meeting.
We can run a trial run, if you're patient, and bring it to FFO and see what the time and amount of effort and how difficult it is. The other thing, I warn you on this before we get in FFO, just so everyone knows, this could delay your payments for a while, because often that material lags behind a month or two.
What I'm hearing, Mike, is that Phil is wanting to make a motion for FFO to do an analysis to see if our board has the information we need to make good decisions, and then bring forward a recommendation.
Yes.
Is that...
In consultation with the business team.
In consultation with the business team? Okay. And I'm not even sure you need a motion, because it's what we do in FFO anyway, so I don't even know if I would...
How about we table a motion and just agree to review this, and see if it's a kind of quasi-feasibility study, see what it would cost, see what it takes to actually...
And it may take, if you don't mind, it may take a couple of months. You've got holiday break. We have a real early FFO and board meeting in January. These people do take a week off at Christmas, one, a few times they do. And we have to have that ready for bids in January. So you're a little bit tight line there. And to actually run one and try it, if you gave two, we could give an example and figure out how it's going to work. Because I'm telling you, it's significant organization of work behind it. The links are nothing, nothing to make. It's the backup to it and the organization of it.
Well, don't we also have a new pool of resources, since you sent out a survey, and we got a bunch of yeses back?
So...
There's people that are doing this.
So Brad, I followed up on those. So there's not a bunch.
Okay.
Well, there's a handful, but...
Yep.
So you know...
Our goal is a district to be in the top 1%. So if there's 1%, then there's somebody to learn from.
And it appears there's probably not doing it that way. So one of the districts, for example, and there's two that answered that they did hyperlinks in the MASB. One was anonymous. Can't find, we're not going to check it out. The other one's my previous district. They misunderstood the question. Both Lori, Brian, and I all worked there. We called our previous partner there, and they make hyperlinks to the PO and credit card, not the detailed backup. And so we've made two or three phone calls so far. The districts don't do that. They misunderstood the question somewhat. They do hyperlinks. And our insinuate, will recall this, I only had a couple of meetings before I convinced everyone to go to board book. You did zip files, which is a hyperlink. Nothing to it to make it in there. But to be honest, Cindy did double the amount of time doing that as she does for board book back then. It's probably a little easier now, and there's some pieces to it. But the part I'm concerned about, we're already pushed to the limit, guys. I'm telling you, the business office is very pushed to the limit, and errors will happen if we overburden. So accommodate as much as we can. Let's bring it back. Let's see what the labor is. Let's go forward. But I also caution, and you have some of you guys, no, and fine line for me to walk. It's, you're kind of trending in an area where you normally, as you saw, districts delegate. It's the summer administration. Boards, set a budget. That's your primary job.
Right. We are oversight.
You hold us to stay within the budget.
And we've got to be careful about not getting out of our lane.
And then at the end of the year, you use an audit review that we met all state and federal guidelines. We met all GASB standards, and you hold us accountable for that.
Right. To be clear, there is, there is not an issue.
It's always, always available. But as FFO saw, it's available on the stack about this high.
Right.
But we're talking...
Give us a little time, and we'll go to work on it. I have no problem. So exactly, and I hope you see it, last month, you asked a question. Within days, I went to work on it. So I reacted to it. I mean, I liked what we gave you back, but, you know...
But November is 21 purchase orders.
Yep.
And that's the $3,000 limit, which we don't need to drill down that far.
We weren't clear, Brad. And we went back and looked at the tape just recently again.
Mm-hmm.
And now looking at through the lens of what you're saying, we probably understand that, but it was not clear what you were asking last time. If you remember, it was a very brief, and I said that I have to go do some work on it.
And also, you saw in my letter that I think that I'd like to avoid what I think is a mistake and what happened with a purchase order in the past. And I want to somehow try to avoid that is...
So you and I might debate on that, and I don't want to get into that, to be honest. But mistake would be the wrong word. And I think Mr. Cooper would be kicking you right now, if he could, on that. So in that meeting, it was clear that we wanted the arches, but it was dependent on what the insurance settlement would be. And Bob needed to go back and see if we were going to get payment for the ADA ramp that we were building. And once he did, the order was to bring it back to the board for approval. Once we did, he did bring it back for approval. There was not a mistake. It might have been a misunderstanding that he put it on the consent agenda versus the regular agenda. From there, we have said that will not occur again, and we haven't. And nor did we ever do that previously.
And to me, that's good business practice. When you move forward and something happens and you have questions, you'd like to do something a little bit different. To me, a good business practice is look at what you're doing, tweak it, let's do something different, study it, do something different, go around, see if it works. If it works, you move on. But for people to come up and say, mistake, or it's broken, or, to me, that's insulting, because I don't see it that way at all. That is good business practice, just like anyone who does business has things that happen throughout their practice. And it's just a plan-do-study act. We are always looking to improve our process, and we found a way to improve our process. Nothing was broke. It wasn't wrong. It wasn't a mistake. We decided that we did not want it into the consent agenda, and we took it out. Solved.
If, to go back on page, if you gave us, because of the holiday to February, we could bring what we believe would be a little bit of a practice run to FFO about the amount of time, how difficult it was to do it, if we were able to do it, link it, organize it, and then we could bring it back to the February board meeting, because of that short timeline in January.
And I, the only reason I made the motion, right, and I don't want my motion to be misconstrued as, as anything but just additional information. You know, I appreciate, the thing that I appreciate the most about Brad as board member is he's always making sure that we're flawless as a district in everything that we do. And, you know, I thought long and hard about what we do well as a district. And I think we provide an exceptional return on taxpayer dollars. And that is exemplified in the work that, Mike, you do and your business team do. And I think... deliver flawless audits every single year. We have not had an issue in the seven, eight years that you've been here. You know, the bond has millions of dollars under budget to date, the fund balance has grown from less than 10% to nearly 25, 30% in your tenure. So I, I am a huge supporter of the work that this district does, and furthermore, you know, when you look at the Bulletin 1014 that the, that the MDE puts out every year, we ranked 271st in per pupil funding, and when you look at our, but when you look at our expenditures, we're 198th in instructional support and 777th in business and admin oversight. So we, we do a heck of a lot with the funds that we have, and we put them where they need to be, and this is all while delivering top 2% to 3% student scores in M-Step ACT, SAT in all grades and all subjects in all schools. So I think, you know, at the end of the day, we continue to deliver exceptional business performance and, and exceptional taxpayer investment. And, and you know, Brad, I do want to address the point that you made, we had confusion on one line item, you know, all eight of us, you know, the seven board members and Mike included, approved a consent agenda where those items were listed, and I think we all identified that it wasn't exactly how we wanted to do it, and we've made a change, so we did do a root cause investigation, figure out what happened and change. And I think, I think your point is well taken, that we do want to make sure that we know exactly what we're approving on big ticket items, but when you put the minor amount of confusion in perspective, $80,000, by my calculation, that represents that we were confused on less than .01% of the finances during Mike's tenure. Not that we didn't approve it, but that we were just confused on documentation. So I think, you know, what I want to put into perspective is when we do have confusion, it's resolved, and in comparison to the total amount of taxpayer dollars flowing through this organization, I truly feel that every single one of them is a positive return on our taxpayers' dollar.
Thank you, Phil. The, what concerns me about this whole process, this, this new motion even, is that we as a board get dangerously close to being, doing things that we aren't intended to do. If we wanted someone who is going to get into the minutia and the details of the budget, I would, of the, of the dollars, each dollar spent in drilling down on a consistent basis, I would say you should probably be a controller and not a board, board member, because it is not a board member's responsibility to drill down to that level of detail. Sure, if there is an issue, if there is a certain question, in my five years I've worked with Mike, he has been responding very quickly, and those are resolved, but it is not our job to get into the details to that, to that level.
So you agree with me that we don't want what we have in this packet, that that was a confusion between myself and Mike, that we don't want this?
I agree, I definitely don't, I don't want that. I definitely don't want that, and I don't even want, I don't want detail linked in to drill down at all. I, I like where we're at, I believe that we have the information we need to make good decision, decisions. If, if I or any other board member needs more information, the administration has always been very quick to respond, and I think it puts us in a situation, when you, when you give that level of ability to drill down, it, it puts us in a situation where we start to feel like that's our responsibility in looking for the minutia in check registers or, or details that we're not intended to. I feel like if you would go to MAS B's training, that, that they tell you over and over, they have lines of, this is a board member's job, this is a superintendent's job, this is your financial team's job, and don't cross them, because when, when a board starts getting into the details like that, what does it tell our financial office? This is, well, well, they don't, obviously they don't trust me because.
So not a matter of trust, it's of doing my job.
But, but this is not what MAS B would say. MAS B does not train us to get into the minutia.
They have an opinion.
They do, they do, and, and.
They don't have any enforcement at all in the state of Michigan. They're there to train.
But we are a board, we are a board of seven, we're not a board of one, so it's going to take all of us to agree on what we want. So I'm just saying, I think by, by opening this up, you're starting to, to create a precedence that I think you get in dangerous territory of, of working outside your, where a board member should be. We are policy, we're supposed to be up here, we hire auditors who go into depth and getting us great audit reports. If we wanted, we could even go deeper into the audit, but we have always gotten the highest marks on our audit, we're in great financial shape. I, I see no reason to take time and, and resources and, and do this and, and show our financial office that, you know what, the board does not trust us, obviously, because they think they need to double check our check registry, and I don't know, Mary used to be an employee, and, and do you remember any checks and balances when, that were in place when you had to?
Yeah, I mean, as, as a department head, checking my own staff, and, and they weren't always minor purchases, but checking my own staff, then it went through administrative assistant in the, in the school, the principal, came down here, was approved by an administrator, went to finance, I mean, there were so many checks along the way, I, I don't, I don't see duplicating or going beyond, I don't think that's where our expertise lies. There are people who have those jobs, there are checks and balances for those jobs. I, I think it would be putting a fear factor in people where they're more likely to make mistakes out of, oh my gosh, and, and putting more stress on people where they don't need to have that stress.
So at a threshold of $25,000 in a month, we might have five, and with all five of those, we know what a purchase order looks like, it's one page, and we could have two pages of backup. So are we talking about 15 pieces of paper here?
No, you're not. So just a little clarification, for example, when you, the Barton-Mallow bill is one that's above that. That Barton-Mallow with backup itself is probably, how many, Brian?
Hundred to 200 pages.
Hundreds of pages. And so it's not quite as clean as that, but just to get this back on table, let's go study it, let's bring it back. I've always been willing to do that, I just want you to know the problems that it would occur. Let's bring it back with the facts again, now that we know that that's the statement, we'll bring it back FFO. I don't need you to go all the debate, let's bring it back, let's take another look at it, that way.
Is your motion still on the table?
I'm not sure you need one, if that's all you're asking us to do, that's just my opinion, if you're, if you're trusting enough, we'll bring it back, you give us the February, we'll put it FFO, we'll bring it back.
And we're always upgrading and improving, and I think looking at, and I don't even know the cost of this other premier version, if that's going to be benefit for us.
We already were, Cindy's had two phone calls into it, it was just release, and I'm not sure a district is even using it yet. So, but it's an upgrade, but it doesn't solve the problem behind the backside of that. We've even looked at business software, major conversion, but most business software just don't do this, there's just, we're not there yet to that paperless, someday we'll be like UPS and that, that scans U code and maybe it's all right there in the document, we're not there yet.
Okay.
And we have multiple hands checking it, but we have multiple hands, Brad, outdoing it, we have coaches, we have teachers going to conferences, we have, it's a bit messy, and there's a lot of work on their side for that, but we'll bring it back.
All right, thanks. So your motion's off the table?
Correct.
All right, motion's off the table. Then we will move into item four, which is a request to address the board. Is there anyone who would like to address the board tonight? No? All right, seeing none, we'll move into item five, which is curriculum instruction and assessment. Penny? Do you, oh, I'm sorry, we have minutes. Ms. Baker?
Yes. The committee met on Tuesday, November 26th, and we talked about several different items, major change proposals being the first, curriculum specialists presented the major change proposals that will be presented to the Board of Education for information at the December meeting. The proposals include the high school IB English, MPS is updating the IB English curriculum to align with IB's curriculum review cycle and process. The name to IB, name change to IB Language and Literature reflects a shift to both literary and non-literary texts in a variety of forms. The proposal includes supplemental compensation for teachers to update the MPS curriculum and resources. Elementary literacy, MPS will be implementing K to five units of study from Lucy Cawkins for reading and writing. These units are aligned to standards and embrace the essential, essential literacy practices. This is a two-year implementation with writing in 2020 to 21, and then reading at phonics in 21 to 22. The proposal includes funding for the purchase of the curriculum resources as well as the needed professional learning for all K to five teachers. Next, we went into the sex education report, and the 1920 Advisory Board on Instruction and Sex Education and Birth Control has been confirmed. Reverend Wally Maite will be the co-chair. Our students continue to do well in the topics for teens in health and wellness classes. This has helped lead to fewer teenage pregnancies in Midland County and a leveling out of sexually transmitted diseases. Inclusion and diversity update, the MPS community advisory team has met twice and will continue to meet monthly. The team has reviewed the inclusion and diversity strategy, worked to establish their sense of community and team, and is now working to determine the strengths and opportunities related to inclusion and diversity. Over the next few months, the team will refine that work in preparation to meet with Mr. Sherrill and district leaders, and we will meet again after the first of the year.
Great, thank you. Moving into item 5.2, which is for action, textbooks. Nine.
Yes. The following textbook was presented for the 28-day period of examination at our last board meeting on November 18th. The administration recommends the approval of this book. If approved, the purchase is contingent on the available funding as approved in this fiscal year budget. The book will be used for welding tech one, two, and three. The title of the book is Welding Skills, the publisher is ATP.
Great, thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for item 5.2.
I move, we accept approval of the book Welding Skills for Welding Technology One, Two, and Three.
Support? Approved by Friddell, support by Roush, and we'll open for discussion. Sounds like a thriller.
I did not read this whole book. I've been reading all the books.
She has, she's reading them all.
But I didn't do welding.
Okay, we'll move into a vote then, all in favor of approving the purchase of these, the welding technology one, two, and three books, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and it passes unanimously. Item 5.3 is for information. Who's got this one?
That's me too.
All right.
I'll remind you all that major change proposals are a formal way of making significant changes to our curriculum or courses. Those can really be just a name change, that's something that simple, or it can be significant as a complete curricular overhaul. So we have two proposals that are presented for your consideration, and they'll come back for action at a future board meeting. And Lynn read those so beautifully in the meeting minutes, so I won't share significant detail unless you have questions. Those two proposals are, one being the high school IB English, and that includes a name change and curricular change in alignment with the IB revision process. The second is the elementary literacy proposal that Lynn referenced, and this really is a full curriculum update along with the accompanying professional learning for our teachers, K5. The cost of each proposal includes all anticipated expenses such as curriculum development, staff development, and staff and or student materials. Expenses for the total implementation are described in each proposal, which are certainly available in my office for review. Board action is anticipated at the January board meeting. If these proposals are accepted, the changes will be incorporated into the student enrollment procedures for the upcoming school year. Upon approval, the implementation of these changes will be dependent upon next year's budget.
Great, thank you.
I might just add as a point of clarification, if you do review these proposals, the elementary literacy proposal has two funding options, not yet knowing what our calendar will be for next year. We built in what is a more cost-effective option if we use existing professional development days. If that is not possible, then we've put option B for cost, which is a combination of release time and paid staff time. We are hoping that option A works.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving into item 6.1, under finance facilities and operations, we have minutes. Ms. Friddell?
That'd be me. Summer 2020 bond work, bid package one, of representatives from Barton-Mallow and French and Associates presented bill results and award recommendations for the summer 2020 work, and those were the ones that we just approved. Mr. Sherr and Mr. Bruton discussed the following topics with the committee. We did talk about October financial, October financials, no significant variances from prior years were noted. Board packet, board packet financial reporting, consent agenda, language alterations and transparency options were discussed. The risk management follow-up, staff, staff will begin work on risk management in relation to workman's compensation insurance in preparation for the spring/summer bid. The Halo smart sensor bid was discussed, the classroom furniture purchase was discussed, and non-affiliated employee wages, wage scale adjustments for non-affiliated employee groups were presented to the committee for consideration and feedback. And our next FFO meeting is on Monday, January 13th at 5:00.
Thanks, Mary. Item 6.2 is for action.
Yep. So tonight we have one gift that requires your approval tonight because of the amount. The amount is $6,500 from the HH Dow Music Booster Club in support of sheet music, travel, and instruments.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to accept the $6,500 from HH Dow Music High Booster Club.
Support. Moved by McFarlane, support by Friddell, any discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you. Move into a vote, all in favor accepting the $6,500 gift, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. And we'll move into item 6.3, which is for information.
So both items 6.3 and 6.4 are informational only, and item 6.3, we're presenting gifts over $11,000, as has been our tradition, we will air the details of those gifts at the end of our presentation, but I think it's worth noting that over half of the gifts that are in the informational category this evening are for robotics programs totaling $6,150, which is appropriate with the presentation that you saw this evening. And then item 6.4 is the gift of items, and we'd like to recognize Dan and Aaron Lasher for a ballroom piano for Jefferson Middle School, and also Ron and Sharon Fetzke for Jefferson Middle School for donating a percussion kit.
Great, thanks, Brad.
You're welcome.
Moving into item 7.1, under human resources. Jeff?
I have 7.1 and.
Okay, 7.2, great.
Yes. So first, the board and staff extended the following families. Phyllis McDonald passed away November 11th, 2019. Mrs. McDonald was a kitchen assistant and school aide at Midland High School, Adams and Northeast for 24 years, she retired in 2006. Also Terry Liegib, who passed away November 13th, 2019. Ms. Liegib was a paraprofessional at Woodcrest Elementary for 21 years, she retired in 2010. Mr. David Powell, who passed away on November 27th, 2019. Mr. Powell was an MPS teacher and principal. During his 34 years at MPS, he worked with students and staff at Chipewasie, Chestnut Hill, Mills, and Windover, he retired in 1994. And then Mr. Gary Verlindy, who passed away on December 2nd, 2019. Mr. Verlindy spent 41 years as a dedicated educator and administrator with Midland Public Schools. During his MPS tenure, he was an assistant superintendent, director of human resources, a building principal, a coordinator, a supervisor, a teacher, a coach. During his MPS career, Mr. Verlindy worked with students and staff at the Administration Center, Chestnut Hill, Central Middle School, Dow High School, Midland High, and Jefferson Middle School. In addition, Mr. Verlindy was also the Ernest R. Britton, Midland County Teacher of Humanity... Center, Chestnut Hill, Central Middle School, Dow High School, Midland High, and Jefferson Middle School. In addition, Mr. Verlindy was also the Ernest R. Britton Midland County Teacher of Humanities Chair for that group. And I'll also mention 7.2 here because that's informational, and this is an announcement of retirement. Ms. Sherri Mitchell, manager of Information Systems, Information Systems Department, will be retiring effective January 3rd, 2020.
Very good. Thank you. Item eight is correspondence to and from the Board of Education. Information letters will go out to several, several of those who donated. 8.2 is a letter to the Board of Education from the Mackinac Center for Public Policy requesting superintendent contract. And item nine is scheduled activities for information. I do want to call attention to our organizational meeting, which is January 13th at 6:00 PM. That was added to, to our schedule. The schedules have also been updated throughout December 2020. So now we'll move into study discussion session, and I'll start.
I just had a quick question. In our packet, we had a sex education biannual report. Is that just a memo for information? We don't need to cover anything on that?
Yeah, that's just part of our standard process. You're free to read that if you have questions. I'm happy to answer those, or I'm sure Steve Paul would be as well.
Okay, great. Just wanted to make sure we didn't miss anything.
No, we covered it at the CIA meeting as well.
Okay. All right.
Okay, I'll start with you, Brad. Study discussion questions.
Um, I appreciate the, all the kids that came to present on the robotics. I learned a ton in how advanced they are. I think that's phenomenal, and the level of programming that they're able to achieve is just phenomenal. So I'm, my hats off to them. I think they did a great job.
I second what Brad said. That was, that was pretty impressive, especially as somebody with an engineering degree to put that into perspective on what those kids were doing was, was far and above what I did as a freshman in college at Michigan Tech where we were building a mousetrap car without any programming. So it's absolutely amazing and great presentation, so.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, just to piggyback on that, I just, it amazes me that these are youngsters that are doing all this. My oldest son is a computer programmer, and I don't know that they did anything like that till they got to the college level. So it's amazing, and thank you to so many of the adults that support that program. Also, just a couple other thank yous. I, I've been reading what the different schools have been doing, and Midland Public Schools is always very generous in their outreach, especially at Christmas time, to, to reach out and help others. Generosity of the gifts tonight, too, as you said, for the robotics, but all kinds of things. And I, they're, it's especially meaningful as we, we talk about the Christmas season and generosity, but every single month, we have so many generous gifts, and we can't thank you enough for all those. And to our shining stars, it's always a pleasure to, to acknowledge people that go above and beyond. And then just on a, on a personal note, the death of Gary Verlindy sends all of us, and I knew Gary for many years, and just, it just aren't words to really express the kind of man Gary was and how much he loved students and loved teaching and loved the people he worked with. Above and beyond his family, who were always so special, talked about those grandchildren all the time, and, and he will be, he will be dearly missed by so many. And it's our last meeting before Christmas, so enjoy Christmas break, everyone. Well deserved, a little relaxation hopefully, and have a wonderful holiday season.
Thanks for the greetings, the Christmas cards from the different schools. Really impressive work, those work even some of them by kindergarteners, which is pretty nice. I want to say how much I appreciated the tour of the science, new science renovated lab at Dow High. That was my old stomping ground, and I was just amazed. So many things that we had hoped for, for so long, and they've come to fruition, so that was really, really impressive. Also impressive and humbling, I thought, were the presentations that the robotics teams did. For me to even possibly conceive doing any kind of programming like that at that age, even at this age, was just amazing. And the Dow High music parents, I just wanted to say it is the fruit buying season at Dow High. Support Dow High's fruit buying. It's so delicious, but I think you can probably contact Dow High and get your fruit. And Merry Christmas to everyone, and happy break.
Well, Phil, if you were impressed as an engineer, imagine my amazing as a attorney.
Yeah, you got to throw another bus.
It's also good to know they detest attorneys. Comforting. Just real quick, thank you very much to the schools who gave us these cards. We like to display them every year. Every year, the robotics presentations are just incredible. The, the whole program itself is a gem of the district, and it continues to grow every year, and it continues to improve, and just a testament to that tonight. Other than that, just Merry Christmas to everybody. This is gonna be your last chance to see everybody before the holidays. So enjoy it, enjoy your time with friends and family, and everybody be safe.
Thanks, Scott. I guess I'll add, just I'm feeling very grateful this season for, for the educators in our district, for the students and the hard work that they put in, day in and day out, and grateful for a break coming up for our, our educators as well as our students. And just a prayer that everyone stays safe over the holiday, and we see you back here in January.
Mike?
Labor Day waiver, we have officially applied for that as a county, and so we should know very quickly if that is. The, the field, the county school districts, we would go Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday of the week before, and so we would gain three days and get, get us out. We're, then from there, we would go into negotiating the calendar with the teachers. We're ready to go with that as well. So we should have a calendar potentially soon to announce to people for planning. Jeff and I have been working not only on the EOP, Preparation for EOP, which we've had one place for a couple of years, but some new requirements there. We've been also working with our county emergency responders on a full-scale drill that'll occur this May, and we continue to make progress. Jeff and I have also been working on some, some technology called Raptor, and it's a, it's a much more advanced than what our current crisis can go and do much more, and we've, we are ready to purchase that and begin to implement. And I think you're gonna see some real promise there as well as front office, how we check people into the schools as we go forward. So get ready for that. And I'm trying to go quickly because we got some time restraint here. 31 and money, get used to that. Penny's gonna start talking about that more and more. We have school mental health dollars that the legislature's been sending us. It flows to the ISD. We got our first group last year, and they've now put in more. And so most of the state is a little bit abine of how do we get this implemented quickly so we don't lose those dollars. And so we have Kristi Haynes stock starting right now. We're looking at potentially a second one, and then maybe contracting some outside services, but yet to come on how to finalize all of that as well. Great Start readiness grant, we were able to secure extra seats for that. It appears that there's only two kids in the waiting list at the county consortium. We're gonna take those two kids and put them in our two classrooms, which requires some adding a little bit of a staff to do that, go from 16 to 18 in those two classes. So we continue to expand our ability to offer preschool is the point there. The other one I'm going to say is Suti, Suti, I'm still sitting out here, and you guys raved about robotics, and I can't help but say, and Suti, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not even sure your daughter's involved anymore.
She is.
Okay. And Suti puts hundreds of hours in, is the glue, and is one of the reasons, in my belief, that Center Park and Plymouth have teams now. So thank you, Suti, very much for all of that, for that as well. And, and the last one for me is Gary. So if you recall, some Lynn would, Scott would, when you toured Pam and I in the district before I had this position, Gary was our tour guide, and his love for MPS was incredible. And it was one of the reasons that we knew we were in at that point. And so he showed us that in his tour and his passion here, and so you couldn't have had a better employee than Gary, and he was awfully good to me in those first two years. I remember one time something coming right off the bat, and I said, well, I'll take care and go to that, and he goes, oh, no, you don't do those bad things. I do those, and you stay here. So he was a great trooper, and God bless his soul. He's, he's a good Catholic boy sitting up in heaven watching us right now, so. God bless Gary. And Pam, I would hope you could do my evaluation in about 40 minutes and let me get out of here, but I doubt that's probably gonna happen, but maybe we can do that. And so I, we have a 9:30 limit, so I think you should extend it just in case, so you don't run. You guys figure out what that is, shorter the better in my mind. And before everyone leaves, on my evaluation, I want to make sure everyone understands, because I say it afterwards, but I'd say it now, my evaluation is a reflection always of the district, the community, the teachers, the support staff, and all these people downtown who support me every day. And so make sure you understand, we have some, we've got incredible results, but we have incredible people that are doing that, including the students on up.
And just for our audience to know, when we, we will go into closed session for the evaluation, and then after the evaluation, we'll come back into open session, but pretty much to, we'll read over the results of the evaluation, and then it'll be the end of the meeting. So if you want to stay, you are more than welcome to stay. It'll probably be later evening, but if, if you want to exit, that's fine, too. So thank you so much for coming. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to extend our meeting.
I'll move to extend the meeting. Do we have?
So 9:30 is your cap? How long?
Do you want to say 10 o'clock this week, sir?
10, 30 minutes, I think is good. Okay. I'll, I'll move that we extend the meeting to 10:00 PM.
Support. Moved by McFarland, support by Friddell. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, and it passes unanimously. Okay, now we will, I'll accept a motion to go into closed session for superintendent evaluation.
So moved.
Support.
Moved by Friddell, supported by McFarland, all in favor.
Aye.
If you want to take five minutes, use the bathroom, go ahead, and then we'll come back. Great.
You really last one.
Can you just read that two of the prologue at the end?
Yeah.
She had to read.
You think so?
The title of each one and the score.
Yeah, I think it has to be the title of each.
No, not each seven.
No, no, just A.
General category.
General category?
Yep. Instructional leadership.
Okay.
That's all you have to do.
Are we ready?
Actually, that's not a bad, hold on, that's not a bad recommendation. Just that something, page where you say we're at?
To the summary page.
Which summary page, at the very end?
You could have the one with all the categories, N4, the one in the three categories, because that's all that matters. Fifty, forty, and ten.
The one you write the letter later.
All right. But I don't have anything to do. All right. Okay, we are back in open session. We have just completed superintendent evaluation for 2019, and I will go over the different areas that were evaluated and the evaluation score as well. Governance and board relation was, had six different indicators, and all indicators, Mr. Shero received a four, which is a highly effective rating. Under community relations, there are six indicators, and under each of those indicators, he has received a four, which is highly effective. Under staff relations, he has, there are seven different indicators, and of the seven indicators, he was rated highly effective in each. Under business and finance, there are five different indicators, and of all five indicators, he received a score of a four, which is the highest rating, highly effective. Instructional leadership. In instructional leadership, we have ten different indicators, and each of the indicators, he has received a rating of highly effective. Then we moved into student growth metrics, and it is a requirement for the state of Michigan that we look at Superintendent Shero's evaluation and use forty percent of this evaluation as student growth, which means measuring students and how they're growing in their academic achievements. The metrics are put in place, and he receives a highly effective in student growth. Progress toward district-wide goals, we have a district-wide improvement plan, we have district-wide goals, and of those district-wide goals, progress was made on greater than ninety percent of those goals, so he receives a rating of a four, which is highly effective. There were several comments by board members during the evening as we went through the rating process. Many comments were about appreciation for a district improvement plan and the goals that our superintendent has achieved, and the community relations, many opportunities that he's taken in our community to reach out and connect with and include our community in school matters. Business and finance, there were several very positive comments in how the district is in a very strong position, and how the administration and educators in our district have worked hard to help us be in a good position. All in all, the board has been very pleased with Mr. Shero's work here at Midland Public Schools, and we would like to extend our gratitude to him for his fine job and the administrators that are working under him, and he is always very quick to credit the positive things that are happening in this district to, not himself, but the strong administration and educators and all those involved in our district, and the board also appreciates and acknowledges that his evaluation is a reflection of many and all employees in the district, so thank you.
Also want to point out, if there is ever an issue or a problem in the district, you are the first person to own it and not brush it off and blame somebody else. In the seven years I've been on this team, and in the time that you've been with us, you've always found a way to fix it, and you've done so transparently and quickly, so we appreciate that as well. In the seven years I've been on this team, in the time that you've been with us, you've always found a way to fix it, and you've done so transparently and quickly, so we appreciate that as well. And you've always served this community.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. I guess, did you have any comments other than that? Okay. At this...
I'm just voting.
Oh, we have to vote. We have to vote to approve, accept the superintendent evaluation, so may I have a motion?
Make a motion to accept the superintendent evaluation that you just reviewed.
Support.
Motion by Roush, support by McFarland, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And now, if I could have a motion to adjourn this meeting.
That's all moved.
Support moved by Friddell, support by Roush, all in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.